Good afternoon. Here. Here.
Yeah.
Here. This is CFO. May I pretend? May I pretend, Howard?
How are you, Mr. Mayor?
All right. Jeff, what's up? Someone already did a little ventriloquism act for you, so you're good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to get his paycheck. Was that what it is?
Good afternoon, y'all. Before we get started, I want to just take a minute. Jan Alonso is here with our new deputy finance director. I think as far as just give y'all a quick intro- her to give a quick introduction.
So I'm interviewing Amy Larkin. She's the deputy finance director. Jeff and I were kind of kidding when, when we got her application. I said, "Her application makes me tired." She sits on the board of four different agencies. United Way, Midland's area, Contortion for the Homeless, Senior Resources. Also working with the community. So she started yesterday, but we need to keep her for a while. So.
You brought her here?
I did, uh.
You brought her here?
There's no finance reports.
Just for a while.
I can guarantee she knows how to use the spreadsheets.
Well, welcome, welcome. Looking forward to working with you. Usually a warm and fuzzy buds, usually. Every other month they get a little ornery. But Jan, this is the perfect person to train you as to how to deal with us. So, all right.
Just say no.
Is that, is that fair, Jeff?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, welcome, Andy. All right, I neglected to, I think we have some amendments to the agenda. Amendments is stated, addition to the executive session, discussion and negotiations regarding school crossing guard services. Deferring considerations of items thirty-nine and sixty-six from the evening agenda. Is that a motion? Do you have a motion?
Thirty-nine and sixty-six.
I'm sorry.
We have one, the other to add also to executive session. Also under contractual would be add lead generation services, the contract for that. Lead generation services contract.
Okay.
I also'd like to add sewer extension agreement.
What's this?
Executive session.
So you're talking about, you're talking about, you're talking about contract, contract, contractual issues in this discussion, all right. All right.
What's the ra- let me ask this question. What's the rationale of deferring thirty-nine?
I do not know.
I mean, I'm sorry, sixty-six.
It's, it's, it's open, it's, it's.
We haven't advertised, it's not up yet. It shouldn't have been on the agenda.
It's up early. All right. Probably advertised. All right. Motion, was there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Moving second. It's a amendment to the agenda. Adding two more items to executive session as well. Lead generation services and sewer extension. All right, contracts. I'm going to give you this question, please, call it all.
Hi.
Yes.
Hi.
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 Hi. Thank you. Jeff?
First item today, the discussion is the wayfinding project. Mr. Bill Allen, president and CEO of Experience Columbia.
Got Bill.
Good afternoon.
Hey, Bill.
Um, I think most of you know that probably about three years ago, we met with several city officials and several community leaders and discussed the wayfinding signage throughout Columbia. What we had currently and what was needed. And came to a decision that we needed to explore what our opportunities and possibilities were to start a new wayfinding signage project. We sent out an RFP and received fifteen responses from that that were national firms. There were no South Carolina firms that, that answered the RFP. Um, and got that narrowed down to three or four and through some very tedious vetting we, and recommendations and looking at experience, we decided on a company called YaZi out of Miami area, over twenty years' experience, very well respected in the sign business. We selected YaZi and they partnered with our local sign company Colite International, which is very well-known internationally signed.
If no, if no one's ever visited Colite, that place is amazing.
Yeah.
They've done something special out there.
Felt very fortunate to have a company of their caliber right in their backyard that they could work with. And I think they will work together on some future projects. So we started, started the project after we decided on who was going to be the sign consultant and the manufacturer. Is this, Missy, is this ready to? So we partnered with YaZi, has got a little information on their history, over thirty years' experience. And Colite will actually manufacture and install the signs. YaZi, Chris Rogers came up and spent, spent a lot of time in Columbia. He's spent four or five days in a row. He visited every site where we currently have a wayfinding signage. And I won't bore you with all of this, it's a hundred and seven pages, but an extensive study of every sign that's in Columbia, the location, what it's, what it has on it. He discovered, there was a, the last time it was done was two thousand and three, two thousand and four. Existing signs, um, he evaluated what we had. It was a hundred and seventeen signs originally. Some of those signs were missing information. He said he actually followed them through the eyes of a visitor since he was visiting Columbia for first time. He actually went in wrong direction on some of the signs. After months of studying the market, we came up with two hundred and twenty-two signs needed, which is a significant increase. But if you think about what's happened in the last fifteen years with the Bull Street, we need to direct people to Bull Street, Vista, to many different attractions and areas. And we also have several new districts that were not included fifteen years ago. You know, we've got North, North Columbia. We've got, um, we've got several new ones. So went through all the districts, identified locations of where they need to be. And then we started putting together a group of local stakeholders and community involvement. You can see the two consultants on the left. On the right, you'll see who's, who has been coming to our meetings and our discussion of what was needed and its direction. All the districts of there, the city, Miss Gentry and Lucinda and several others participated in those meetings. We were told from the start by our consultant that we need to get South Carolina DOT involved from an early start because it's a lot of code issues. So DOT was on board from the start. Of course, USC Benedict and the other area colleges. So we got all of them in, involved and we had, we've had, over the last, it's been two years, since two thousand and sixteen, we've had numerous meetings about what we needed and where we need to get to and how to get there. This is a mock-up of, of a sign that would look very similar to what we're talking about doing. I apologize, it's not really clear. But they're all consistent. They have the whole, the hole and the cap on top are all consistent. They're identified at the top by what district they're in and their color districts. So each district will have their own color. I'll show you in a little bit, all the district colors. And that's been about a four or five-month process is getting districts to agree on what color because we needed, what did I do there? We needed to distinguish the difference. So when a visitor leaves one district, goes into another district, they realize they're entering the historic district or the Main Street district. So, and then each sign will have directional arrows pointing them to what's in that district that's significant. Now, everything on the signs is public. There's no directions to private businesses or private facilities, it's all public. And it's all done with a thought in mind that if a visitor came and did not know his way around Columbia, he or she, and they, and they were looking for something, these signs would help directly. The consultant said many of the signs were mispositioned, that by the time he saw the sign and read it, he, he'd already come up on the intersection to turn and it was too late. He also said the park, parking garages is a part, part of the signs also with a big P. I'll show you that. He said the parking garages were very misleading. He had a city parking garage, he said he went in and there was literally fourteen spaces available to the public in the, in the whole garage. So he said as a citizen, I mean, as a visitor, he got very frustrated driving around with the existing signs. So what he has proposed answers all those problems. Here's another mock-up of a sign with, I think this is North Columbia District, their color is blue. The things that it points to are relevant to what's in the district. Here's several more, this is the Vista. You can see some of the destinations it's directing you to. If anybody has any question on the signs, please stop me. You can see the little small blue circle P, that shows where there's public parking garage. And that's actually the garage, the parking sign. And on the opposite side, it will have the district that is in this parking garage would be in the Main Street district. It would have Maine on the back of the sign. This is a mock-up, it's obviously, it's just on a stand, it's not permanently into the sidewalk. But it's showing you, this is one, this is one existing old one, that is in front, that's on Assembly Street, down near the Klein property. That's an old one. Stood with this just to see DOT on, on the major thoroughfares like Assembly and Gervais, they're requiring five-inch lettering. Believe it or not, one from four-inch to five-inch increases the size of the sign significantly. So we'd only do the five-inch on the wide busy thoroughfares. And then this is on Gervais Street, right in front of the Hampton Inn. This is a smaller lettering. Um, you can see one in the background there. See the difference that it looks. Now, this is not correct in identifying the district because this would be Vista. But it's, they just used USC when it's, that colonial life and some other things there. But he put it up just for the purpose of seeing the size of the sign and the signs, the size of the letters. So we actually, we, somebody actually stopped at the street and said, "It's a pension." Said it straight away and we had to say, "No, you need to turn left." So it was kind of a funny moment. This is, um, all the district signs I was telling you about. It's not real clear, but each, each district up top is a color code. So every wayfinding sign located in that district will have this color on the, on the cap on the top. Identify that. On the reverse side of this sign will be photography that's significant to that district. USC district, they provided photography. We've asked for photography from each of the districts. Historic district, we have historic homes. It's got Bull Street, it's got Fireflies, Spirit Communication Park. So we'd have a sign that's relevant to.
So will there be a master map for people? I mean, I get the color, but you know.
A master map as far as identifying the districts. That's something we could do right now, we're just doing it from the signage perspective. But we could certainly do a map and designate the districts by color that we can hand out.
I mean, I, I, I just, I just assumed that's why you did it by color. Because if not, why wouldn't you have it all the same so that people knew those are the directions of the city?
Well, it is, um, I, I think a lot of the businesses and stakeholders in, in those areas want people to know that, okay, I'm in the Vista, I'm in the Five Point area. We can certainly do a map that, because that's not very costly to do that. We could do that, we could hand it, we'll hand this out at the business center.
It might be nice, you know, to have, ha- having the high entertainment areas and other places a central map, you know. Where people can go, "Look, hey, I want to go to Green because that's, you know, Robert Mills Historic District, I want to go walk those houses," or whatever it is.
We'll do that and we're getting ready, in the next few weeks, open new business center. We'll have that type of information to hand out to anybody that needs it. And, and we can do it online.
So, looking at the districts, the first one says Columbia. There's a Columbia district?
Well, it says, it's going to say Columbia, see, there's a few signs, not many, but there's a handful that lie outside of the district boundary. There's not in the Vista, there's not in the Main Street. There's not many of those, but for those, half a dozen throughout the two hundred and twenty, we, we just put Columbia, see.
Let me, um, question. The houses, um, I guess especially the ones by Historic Columbia. If someone's in the area, they want to go to a particular house, Robert Mills, during the day, there's somebody at Robert Mills, possibly. Or, um, how do we handle that? Because there, because there are two, I know that's probably not on the map now. The Booker Washington, uh, one-room schoolhouse, Monty's one-room schoolhouse on North Main, Major Quarter. Probably nobody there during the day, but I think as, as we tighten up on this, we probably can work with them as well as the Keenan House to be available or have some sort of a contact number so that visitors can call and someone can meet them there. I would like to see that if we can.
I think that'd be great and that might be, right now, Historic Columbia has tours, but you, you know, you just don't walk up on them and start a tour. You have to book them in advance. Robin Waits is, is going to start having somebody book those tours out of a new visitor center. So give us a new central location land. I think it'll increase the number of tours drastically.
So those two.
Did you say Monty?
Yeah.
We've got, it's going, it's on one of the signs.
And they would be on the map of, well, the signs will take care of it, okay.
It's on one of the signs, it just don't have them all, but.
Very good.
When you go back to, go back to these type signs, like for North Columbia, it'll be on one of those.
Bill.
Thank you. Yourself, our number.
Yeah, let me ask you. Our interactive, our bus, could buses be, be a part of getting folk where they need to go and that sort of thing?
They're empty now, so it'd be great.
You know, I think that would be great. I think it's, um, I think it's an educational process. We need the drivers trained on the different districts and, you know, what's in those districts. Because I think it's important that the driver knows where to take them and it may, may not be on the route, but.
Yeah, but the reason I ask that is that we've got, we've got the soda tap top. We got the soda top as a part of the bus routes.
Right.
Most of the time, those buses are empty, the ones that I've seen. We've got some new routes that is, of course, being developed. But that soda top route, the ridership, I don't think is that great.
Yeah, they're, they're looking at re, uh, re-envisioning that, I guess.
Yeah.
I've talked to John.
I've talked to John, yeah.
I think the concept is great, I think the working out.
It would certainly be good, it would certainly be good if it had, I want to say designated buses to get folk where they ought to go, want to be.
Right.
Whether it's North Columbia, whether it's throughout the city. It would certainly be an advantage for those folk who are visiting our city to be able to get on a bus and say, "I want to do a historical tour." And there'd be some inter, there'd be some interaction with the bus routes and say, "Robin Waits at the Historical Society." I think that has, I think that has to be an integral part of what we're doing, how this thing.
That, that's certainly something we can look deeper into and try to work together and find it. Which is kind of a different issue than the wayfinding signage, but it, it does tie together. But, um, right now, I think it's important, uh, we had put a kind of a timeframe, time window on trying to get this project done in time for the March Madness in, in March because twenty-plus thousand visitors coming, we thought it'd be a perfect timing. We are on schedule to do that. We have actually moved the schedule up for some of the signage. We want to have some of the signage installed in place in the Vista area and Main Street area in time for the National Mayor's Conference in September. And we're working towards that goal. They've told us that it is possible to get some up, but we're, we're pushing up against the ultimate deadline pretty soon. We got to confirm everything to move forward and we're about it at that deadline. But I think we can do that.
Everybody make sure you have the September twenty-seventh to twenty-ninth in your calendars, too. September twenty-seventh to twenty-ninth? Tell everybody but you. Twenty-seventh to the twenty-ninth.
Al- also, Mayor, I know that, um, an important part of this project, an important part of this project was your interest in electronic digital-type signage. We, we have, we even, we thoroughly explored those opportunities. I think you met a gentleman with one of the major companies. Was it New York, Kansas City? Talked to them. Initially, we thought it was, that they would provide them free for the advertising. But after meeting with, or after discussing, discussing with them on a conference call, they said that in a major market like a Chicago or Denver, New York, they would put X amount of free digital, knowing that they could sell enough national advertising. Columbia market, they think, is, is on the fringe of being able to do that. They said they may be able to sign enough advertising to make them free, but they would not guarantee it and it would put us on the hook if they don't sell the advertising for the difference, which is very significant. But I mentioned this to you today because I think during the mayor's conference, with all those mayors here from across the country, if we could get that guy to do a sample and let him know there're going to be, how many mayors here from across the country?
Probably fifty.
Fifty mayors? He ought to do one free for us as a sample so that all those mayors could see it. So if, if you'll endorse us, get in touch with him and, and pitch that to him, or since you met him, if you would like to, I think that's something we should, should try. Any other questions? Funding, we got most all the money. And I would tell you that we've had partners in the community that are, are chipping in money. Right now, we've got, um, the city money, money that you approved to fund. We, uh, Experience Columbia is paying fifty thousand of the total bill. We've got, um, ten thousand dollars from the Vista. We've got ten thousand dollars from Main Street. We've got five thousand from Historic Columbia. We are in discussions to get another sixty-plus thousand mainly from USC. We have, uh, requested forty thousand from USC. They have, of the two hundred and twenty-two signs, they have about fifty of them that are USC-related. So we're asking forty thousand for their share and they're, they're, they're telling us everybody's on board to fund it. They just hadn't given us a number. We're also waiting to get a number from Rosewood, Divine Street, Bull Street, North Columbia, that would, would add to our, our number. The signs are about, the circle P is about fifteen hundred dollars a sign. These signs are between two thousand and twenty-five hundred, that's installed. So we're, we're, we're close. If we don't get the full amount, which is about five hundred and fifty-five thousand, um, we'll have to eliminate whatever signs to make up that difference, which is about twenty-five hundred dollars a sign.
Whoever doesn't pay.
We'd have to eliminate a few.
Whoever doesn't pay gets eliminated.
I don't know.
That's code words for next council meeting, they're going, everybody's going to be lined up here wanting us to give grand money.
But I, I think we're closed and I think it's a good project.
You got extra five hundred, Jeff?
Sitting around.
It's coming.
Yes, sir.
Not on your side, but while we got you, I want to ask you a question. Tamika and I had a lady.
I, I was going to mention that, I've already talked to him.
Oh.
Yeah.
We got him.
I was going to, but I was going to bring it up so everybody heard it. So, um, it's not kind of related, uh, Howard and I had a lady, um, from Blackwood who, um, came to our, our open house. And she is from Columbia, but has been in the military. So she's traveled and so she's now come back to Columbia to, to raise her two boys. And she was, she expressed her disappointment. She felt there was not a whole lot to do in Columbia, especially for families. And so I, I respectfully disagree with her. And that said that maybe Blackwood doesn't advertise what we have going on in Columbia. But anyway, one of the things that she brought as a suggestion to us is that most recently she lived in Salt Lake City and they had this pass, winter pass for kids when they were out during the wintertime and summer to go reduce to different attractions. So I shared that with, um, with Bill. First of all, we do have something locally, it's called the Cool Pass. The Adventure State Museum and the zoo participate. But I have talked to Bill about reaching out to other attractions and letting them sign on and, and then also get with Channel Two so that we can maybe help promote it.
How old are her children?
Promoted in Blackwood.
It was twenty-seven dollars for the pass.
Yeah, no, it was how are children, um.
How old are the children?
Seven and ten.
I have lost my hearing.
This is a, this is a.
Don't give me any grief about my hearing disability.
Yeah, I mean, particularly she.
So the lake, the lake, the zoo, few museums, three museums, uh, through the city.
There's, there's a.
Most particularly she kept talking about New Years and how they had a, you know, a ball drop that early in the day. So it's why you heard that Adventure does the same thing.
We did, we did the same thing.
Um, and that, you know.
Tamika was very difficult.
Expanding, expanding the past, but you have, you have young children, so, you have young children, so you, you were, all right.
He was on it.
We're going to do a ball drop in, uh.
Museum of Art and Historic Columbia ought to be two easy ones to hit on that pass.
They should be. When we did this three years ago, four years ago, we went to a dozen, you know, we were, we were hoping, we were trying to get a very small discounted price on the ticket so that it'd be attractive for somebody buying the pass. At the time, those three were the only ones willing to give us a discount. With the success of it, and we sold, we're getting many online. I think now's the time to go back and add, I think we can get a dozen to participate.
The bill will work on that and let us know and then we can help promote it through the city channels as well.
Be glad to. Any other questions on?
Rock and roll on the, on the ones for the Vista, let's get them going.
Okay. You liked the concept?
It looks great, it looks great. I still want, I still want the kiosk, so we got to talk about that.
I know.
Missing, I have to have a conversation with.
I thought we had it and then he wanted to tie us down to a million-dollar commitment.
So for the, I, I'm sorry.
It's too much.
Picture, um, picture on the Columbia District one, that's the inside of the dome?
Uh.
Yes.
Y'all set on that?
No, we're not.
I mean, I don't know what y'all think. I always think the most beautiful thing is the skyline coming over, seeing.
Let me point out that if there's six of those, each one will have a different picture. Yeah, like USC will have, they gave us a library of photography to put on theirs and they've got twenty-something signs and they've probably got ten different photographer that will spread throughout. So it won't be the only one.
Bill, give us an update on the business center, why you got the floor? A visitor center?
Business.
If you've ridden by the corner of Lincoln and Gervais, you've, you've noticed a, it's there and we're almost ready. We've got a few technology things, we don't have phone system yet and some of the technology wiring. We should have that completed this week. We're wait, we're trying to get, um, city staff is trying to coordinate with you, with you, the council and the mayor to do a ribbon cutting the end of August, um, that last week, the week of the twenty-seventh. If you can work out your schedule, we want to do a ribbon cutting and grand opening then. But, um, I, I think, and I've had a lot of people comment that it's such an enhancement of that corner. Where you were staring at Longhorns, uh, coolers, walk-in coolers and loading ramp and some other ugly HVAC. Now all that's hidden behind the building and, and, and I think the corner is just a lot more. It just looks a lot nicer and more inviting. I think it's going to be a welcome addition.
That's good.
Thank you. And we'll have extended hours. We'll have some night, nighttime hours. And we'll have weekends, including Sunday afternoon, that we'll have, we'll have it staffed. So, and we may adjust that as we go along as a need directs us to.
Some of the signs direct people to the visitor center?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just curious.
It will. There's, there's some of them.
Awesome.
Thank you for your time and thank you for your support of the project. And we'll, we'll wrap it up soon and we'll have the signs installed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Number two, item number two is upcoming city council retreat. Ms. Melissa Kaufman, Budget and Program Management Director.
Y'all have taken square footage out of my area over here. So everybody bumps in. I used to have plenty of room to swivel around with.
I don't know if y'all is exactly the right term on that, but.
Good afternoon. In preparation for the next city council in Vision Columbia Retreat, we wanted to discuss a couple of dates for planning purposes. We emailed out yesterday some potential dates for the week of November sixth through the eighth, which is general election week, but there's no council meeting that week.
NLC.
Is NLC that week? Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay.
What you running for?
I'm about, you know, I'm going to become chair of the Council for Institute of Families.
Congratulations.
I wasn't sure the, the NLC dates. Didn't get a chance to check those before.
It starts on Wednesday.
Okay.
Saturday.
Alright. November. That would be November seventh?
Yeah, November seventh or tenth.
Okay. Alright, then that leaves the November dates. No other specific dates were provided for January. Other than exclusion of dates for the week of the nineteenth through the twenty-fifth. So if we, we can either narrow down some specific dates now if we're going to do that, or we can look back for some other.
What, what are y'all preferring or what do y'all?
I don't know, we're getting.
Tyler. Yes, Tyler would be on site to do this. Those were dates she was available.
This far in advance, I'm very flexible.
So yeah, but the sooner we drop it down.
Right.
Venue, venue, what was that?
Dates, you're, you're, you're the moving target.
What are the dates you're talking about?
Dates for, uh, In Vision Columbia Retreat. Yeah. I think so far folks for January, we're pretty open, but we can, we can work with, work with you.
Third week of January is horrible.
Right. That's also the same week that we're referring to that's out is the week of the nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, which I believe is the date.
So earlier in January?
You don't want to do it the first week because you're coming right off the holidays.
Second week of January, Charlie? What, dates are. Okay.
So maybe the week of January, this, look at the week of January seventh or the fourteenth.
Fine with me. We need to go ahead and book a date.
Absolutely, we do. We have not discussed a venue.
Okay. Someone said Boca?
Hawaii's what I heard.
Says they're traveling.
Um, yeah, really, right? What about, um. Do you want to say Alumni Center? Alumni Center.
Oh, they don't have a meeting space.
Oh, the zoo?
I was going to say Hotel Toronto, but they don't have meeting space.
What about the zoo?
About the Keenan House.
Keenan House.
No, they're a big city.
Renovating, yeah. Where?
Dominion.
Has some refunds over there too?
Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to call them.
But y'all, 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 y'all look at options, but I mean, the zoo's great, USC is great. I mean, I, I see any of our historic houses, probably good options.
So obviously, so in town?
As long as it has whatever AV you all need, our capabilities, make sure, you know, technical stuff is.
Ms. Moore usually makes sure that she's, she has what she needs in order to do the proper recordings and.
I say spirit, but I'm feeling crap every other five minutes, so I think we're going to pass on that right now.
We will get back with you on dates for the week of the January seventh or January fourteenth, along with some.
Tuesday, Wednesday. Everybody blocks Tuesday off already, so go ahead and.
What's being proposed is a day and a half start. So the first day is a half day and then the next day would be a full day. And then some individual interviews.
We shouldn't have the professor.
We got enough time. Two, two, I like the idea of Tuesday, Wednesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday's preferred of those two weeks.
No, but David wasn't.
He went at the left.
It'd be January, it was January of.
Sixteen.
It was an emotional charge if I remember correctly.
That'd be a little, yeah, and I, I was going to say Earlwood Park too, but let, let's, let's, we, we might need to be removed a little bit. grateful you can still be in town.
Right, like Salute Shoals when we went, we did Salute Shoals.
Water plant.
It's a pretty neat, it's a pretty neat place.
I love that.
It's a pretty neat place, yeah.
Alright, seventh and eighth to figure out where we're, our eighth and ninth, whatever Tuesday, Wednesday is.
We'll do it. We'll get back with you as soon as possible within the next few days to sort of firm up some dates and some locations. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Alright, before we, before we go on executive session, you don't mind if we hold on all, all boards and commissioners appointments tonight?
Everyone?
Yeah, hold them all. Are you okay with that?
Fine with me.
Alright, just maybe a quick motion that we'll hold on, on all those items this evening. I'm so moved. Just a second?
Second.
Alright, discussion. Your question, Carl, roll.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.